Good afternoon and welcome to the May 4th City Council Study Session. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, let's do that now. We do have some liquor license applications. I think one of them I need a little clarification on. I know Item 3F, the Nile Theater application. I was handed a document, I think council may have seen it electronically, but I think in the last few hours, there was a document supplied by the applicant that I believe is their attempt to comply with the business, well, there were three different ways they could, the business plan, right? Is that your understanding as to what this document is? And I'm sorry if you're at a disadvantage, you don't know what I'm talking about.
... Yes, that is their attempt to present to the council what their business plan is in hopes that will get the council to recommend approval for their liquor license. That's their document to attempt that.
Okay. And I'm a little confused, yes?
Sorry, Mayor.
Mr. Glover.
I know that there's a good neighbor policy in downtown, and so I was wondering if we could get some clarification or some explanation of what that includes, and I think Ms. Lewis will be able to do that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Glover. Just for way of background for the council who weren't here, but a couple of years ago, in late 2012, the city council approved what was called the Downtown Entertainment District. And that district, basically the whole purpose of it was to, within the downtown area that we set, was to say, okay, the 300-foot buffer that is required by state law between churches and schools and establishments like bars and nightclubs that have Series 6 licenses and other types of license like beer and wine bars, that 300-foot buffer is now eliminated. So, the whole idea was to kind of remove that bureaucratic red tape and allow for all of these different kinds of uses in and around downtown. So, as part of that effort, the council wanted to make sure that whether they were daytime uses or nighttime uses, that there was a real peaceful coexistence between the two. And so, the council asked us to put together a good neighbor policy or principles. And so, we worked amongst staff and drafted some things. We met with some of the downtown businesses and some of the existing bars and nightclubs to talk to them about what they do and to come up with some best practices. And so, we do have some downtown, a downtown, um, let me see, I'm looking for it, approach for the good neighbor principles. So, generally what they're geared toward is having them reach out first and foremost to the Downtown Mesa Association and then working with the police department to go talk to them about some of the things that you're reading in this business plan that they provided to you this afternoon. But, you know, bottom line is, how are you going to make sure that you're keeping what you do in your establishment safe and secure for the rest of downtown and for patrons in and around downtown? And really asking them to work with their neighbors, to keep them posted, to make sure they understand what it is they're doing so that things stay like we're saying peaceful, and there's that coexistence. To talk about noise, and in particular after 11:00 PM, and how they're going to manage that. To respect public and private property. There are things like, you know, we would recommend that before 5:00 in the morning, per se, the next day, that you have generally gotten the area in and around your property cleaned up, because then people are coming in the next morning, they don't see that, they don't see the evidence of it, and then they don't feel bothered by it. So, it's just those kinds of simple things that we're saying, these are good neighbor policies and practices that we've seen used by other establishments and that we would request and ask you to take seriously. So, if the Nile goes forward and if they are indeed granted a liquor license, then we would definitely be working with them about these good neighbor policies in addition to what you're reading that they submitted this afternoon.
Yes, Mr. Glover.
Thank you, Natalie, I really appreciate that. And I too echo what you said, is that I hope that if the tenant is able to get a liquor license, that they do apply, abide by the good neighbor policy and that there can be that open dialogue between all businesses and people that live in downtown and operate in downtown so that they don't have the same fears of what happened in the past will reoccur.
Thank you.
Great. That answers some of my questions, but I still, I'm under the impression that there was a permanent injunction issued by a court in response to a civil citation a few years ago, in response to some bothersome business practices, and that that permanent injunction remains in place and that what's proposed to the city council is for us to make a conditional recommendation of approval if the applicant will comply with the terms of the permanent injunction and/or get the permanent injunction lifted. Am I understanding things correctly?
Mayor, council, yes, back in 2002, the county attorney filed a civil action requesting a permanent injunction against the Nile along with the owners and the property owner LLC and the Nile Theater LLC and the managing partner, I'm sorry, council.
Who's the injunction actually on? Is it on the owners of the Nile? Anybody who operates the Nile? The property itself? I mean...
The named parties are Kathleen and Claude Adams. They are the managing partners of CK Properties. CK Properties is also a named party. They are the owners of that parcel, or it is the owner of the parcel, and Kathleen and Claude Adams are the managing partners. The injunction is also against the Nile Theater LLC and Corey Adams, who is the managing partner of Nile Theater LLC.
All people, or does it run with the land like a zoning case?
Well, it runs with CK Properties and it runs with Nile Theater LLC. But then it also contained in the injunction, it says, "And anyone acting in concert with them." So, the question is, my understanding, and I could be wrong on this, but my understanding is the applicant Mantooth is leasing the property from CK Properties, the owners of that parcel. So, the question is, does this injunction apply to them as well since they are, can you lease the property to someone to do something that you maybe yourself cannot do? And the applicant is taking the position that this injunction does not apply to Mantooth LLC. To be honest, I don't know. The language here is somewhat vague, and this injunction was sought by the county attorney and issued by the superior court. So, we've been asking them for quite some time to go talk to the county attorney, talk to the court, and, you know, either have the injunction amended or have the injunction lifted if it no longer applies. My understanding is they've not done that.
So, why do we fret over it? If the state liquor board is the one who, we just simply make a recommendation here, right?
Right.
In this situation? So, we're not granting a liquor license to this location, we're granting an opportunity for a liquor license at this location, should they be able to fulfill the rest of the issues related to operating at that location? Is that correct?
Correct.
Or what am I missing?
Well, you're actually correct. What the staff is recommending is that if council is okay with them having a liquor license, so long as this injunction is satisfied or not applicable, then the recommendation is kind of a conditional. So, the recommendation is for approval so long as the injunction has been complied with or determined not to be applicable. That way, it is left to the state liquor board to decide, does this injunction apply to this applicant, and if it does, have they complied with the requirements of it? And we would, at the same time, if council were to take that action, we would send the information to the county attorney's office just to let them know that the applicant has requested a liquor license and that they have an opportunity to weigh in at the state liquor board if they choose to.
Why should we get even involved in the conditional approval of it? Why is that relevant to this case?
Well, under state law, the council has 60 days to make a recommendation with regard to a liquor license application. If you make no recommendation or if you recommend approval, the state liquor board can approve it without a hearing. So, the recommendation from the staff is to do a conditional recommendation to at least make sure that the liquor board is aware of the issue and that the license does not get approved without somebody reviewing this information to determine if it's been satisfied.
Okay, so, let's scenario this out a little bit. So, let's say we grant them, we say, yeah, we're fine with it, it goes to the state liquor board, it gets approved without a hearing, say there's no condition on it, isn't the injunction still in place?
The injunction is still in place.
So, wouldn't that be enforced regardless of the actions of the city council and the state liquor board?
If and when problems developed, we could contact the county attorney and say, hey, we believe the injunction may be being violated.
So, there's multiple hammers here if they get out of line again?
Sure.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm not worried about something, I mean, these guys have been a pretty good operator so far. Yeah, when alcohol gets added to the mix, it can fuel the fire a little bit, but, you know, so far, I've been pretty satisfied with some of the things that they've been trying to do. Whether or not there's a conditional thing, I don't care. I just don't want to be the one deciding whether or not they can be successful in our downtown, because this is what we've always been talking about. We want entertainment venues, we want nighttime venues, and, you know, so, is there some risk associated with this? Yeah, sure, but you know what? This is the kind of, this is how we get our toe in the water to get this, you know, kind of moving down the road if we actually want to see nighttime entertainment in our downtown.
I guess Councilmember Richens, if I could also point out one other thing. Another area that is less than perfectly clear in the injunction is whether the injunction itself prohibits alcohol, the service of alcohol at the facility. And if it does, does the council want to recommend approval of a liquor license when the injunction may prohibit it? And I say it's less than clear because the exact language says, "Drugs, drug paraphernalia and alcohol inside the Nile Theater are to be confiscated. The person in possession shall be detained by the City of Mesa Police Call." So, you could read that to mean someone cannot bring alcohol into the Nile Theater, and if they do, it's going to be confiscated and they're going to be detained. But it doesn't clearly permit the service of alcohol. So, that's why the injunction's a little unclear, that's why the recommendation is let the state and the county attorney decide what this injunction applies to.
Well, yeah, I have certainly no problem with alcohol being served downtown, and there are multiple liquor licenses that are enforced downtown. I'm just concerned because there's a history at this location with this operator that prompted the...
About this operator?
Well, okay. There's a relationship between the operator and I think it still complies with the terms of the injunction. So, as long as, I mean, like I say, I have no problem with alcohol on Main Street. We can flood the streets with alcohol. I just don't want to see... I just don't want to see, I want to see the good neighbor policy applied. I think the other folks who are serving alcohol downtown are doing so responsibly, and we're not having problems, and I just want to make sure that remains the case. So, if we vote in favor of this, it will go to the state liquor board, and they will have to determine whether or not there's a conflict with the permanent injunction. Is that right?
If the motion is for conditional approval, then it will be brought to their attention.
And I'm not sure that it's agendized as conditional approval, that it's recommendation for approval period.
That's okay, because the agenda has to be a, has to give reasonable notice to the public as to the intent of the council and what issues are going to be discussed and decided. So, if council wants to do a conditional approval, you can certainly make that motion. We have to take it off the consent because under state statute, if you're going to recommend anything less than approval, it has to be specifically identified, the basis for the council's conditional approval or recommendation for denial.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Do we see any issues at all with the plan that they've presented us? Because I was reading through and it looked pretty straightforward, and it looked like they were doing a best faith effort, I guess, in trying to control.
Let me start off. I guess one of my concerns is it's not signed, so I don't know who actually drafted this and prepared it, but assuming it came from Mantooth, they have accurately identified all the requirements in the injunction, and they said that they are complying or they will comply. From a business plan standpoint, I guess I'm not the person to ask, and that might be Tim, and in terms of the enforcement.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, from our perspective, there's not any enforcement with that. So, it's basically just a document that will either help the council make a decision and could be forwarded to the liquor board if we wanted to as well for them to consider. So, that's something that the council could direct as well.
Mr. Fender.
I remember from our prior conversations about the good neighbor policy, there was one nuance or inside these buildings, they have private security, there's a lot going on. We talked about having off-duty Mesa PD on the exterior, public ways, because experience with Club Cabo and some of those and what happened in the old Tribune parking lots and things, they were pretty out of control. So, I don't know if we ever found any opportunity to enhance that. Also Mesa PD has the radio contact for backup and other things. But I know we didn't finalize that detail, but I'm hoping that we look at that. We don't want to compromise the officers inside the buildings, but having good, strong law enforcement on the exterior on a private hireback kind of thing, I thought might be a good way to enhance that, but I guess that'll be for future.
Could we make compliance with the good neighbor policy, one of the conditions?
The state statute lists 12, excuse me, specific basis for reasons for recommendation of denial, and it's really not a going forward that we want you to do this. But I think council can certainly give the direction that the intent and the expectation is that they will comply with the good neighbor policy, and if they don't, you know, whatever, we will be contacting them. But it's really not a basis for recommendation to the liquor board.
So, the good neighbor policy is just a voluntarily opt-in type of a thing? It's nothing, it's not a hammer we can impose on anyone?
Mayor, that is accurate to, here's the conversation that we had with the council at the time, was that, you know, if there was a really problematic case, let's just say that we went forward, we said, here, let's work together and let's do a good neighbor policy. They said, sure, we're all open to that, we're going to do all these things, but in reality, they don't follow anything. And so, we're continually having issues and problems, and we go to them and say, hey, remember that good neighbor policy, what are we doing about that? And they say, sure, we're going to do that, we're going to do it. And so, we do that several times, and we're just not getting anywhere. What the council can do, or what the city does have, is that in addition to them going forward for their liquor license, and that's approved by the state, as you know, every year, they have to come to tax and license and receive a permit to actually serve alcohol in Mesa. So, that's an administrative permit and process, but it is something that the council has to say, if we need to use a stick, we have one. So, that was the conversation that we had with the council to make sure that it was like if we wanted the good neighbor policy and we weren't getting any traction, that we would have an ability to say, please, pay attention, this is important. Does that help you?
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to, I want to see downtown go forward as well, and I see serving alcohol is an important part of that, so I'm, like, again, I don't have a problem with that, I just, I don't see that there's, that the applicant is, right now, they've got a permanent injunction saying they can't serve alcohol. I think they need to go deal with that issue before they apply for a license to serve alcohol. But, and I assume that the state liquor board is sharp enough to be aware of that, but maybe I shouldn't be assuming that. So, I just have a lot of questions revolving around this situation. But if we've got, if we get the things, if they end up being bad actors and there's things we can do to respond to that, then I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt to get started. I don't, it doesn't seem like anyone else on the council is perhaps as worried about this as I am, so. I guess the question is, are we comfortable leaving this on the consent agenda?
It has to be, it can't be.
Okay, all right.
It needs to be pulled.
If we're going to do a recommendation with conditions, it should be removed from the consent agenda so that we can specifically state the conditions and the basis for, actually, or if the mayor would like, I can write up a motion and it'll be placed on the consent agenda, and we would just attach with council direction the minutes from this study session, because in this study session, we have discussed the specific items that the state liquor board requires in terms of why you're recommending conditional recommendations. So, if you want, I can write a motion now that would be read into the consent agenda, and then it would stay on the consent agenda.
Sure, and I don't know if there's anyone here from the applicant, but I would hope that they would be willing to let us know that they have every, that they are going to comply with the good neighbor policy.
Hi, my name is Michelle Donovan, I'm the sole owner of Mantooth Group LLC. I've been operating the Nile for the past five and a half years. I have made multiple attempts to contact the city attorney's office and the county attorney's office to get the injunction lifted, as has my lawyer. I have a document that was provided to the DMA on Friday from my lawyer stating that he does not read the injunction as if it applies to Mantooth and that it applies to the parties listed. I have a copy for each city council member as well as a copy of my business plan to move forward. We have been working with Nedco DMA, Visit Downtown Mesa, and our neighbors for the past five and a half years to make sure that we're doing everything we can to not bring back a nuisance as Corey Adams once had. We are not the same people. I was 20 years old when that was put into effect. I was in college, I had no idea what was going on. So, we are trying our very best to act in good faith that we will do everything we can to make sure that you do not have the same problems that you had before.
Thank you, and we want to hope you be successful. Is it your intention to comply with the good neighbor policy?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Any other, I'm sorry.
Sorry, my lawyer will be here for the public hearing to go over any questions you have with his contact with the county attorney's office about the injunction as well.
Okay. Well, Ms. Fender, what do you recommend? Do we need to flag this for the liquor board so that they know that there's a permanent injunction in place, or is that really not our job? And maybe ought we to be satisfied with the applicant committing to us that they intend to comply with the good neighbor policy? And I guess maybe that's a political question. Is there any way we can bind them to comply with the good neighbor policy, or is that just totally a voluntary thing?
I think it's just a voluntary policy that we ask the downtown merchants to comply with.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm ready to move forward. I think the council is willing to trust you, and you've done a great job the last few years, so thank you for bringing a good business to downtown Mesa. We wish you every success.
Thank you very much.
And I think we're comfortable leaving it on the consent agenda at this point.
With conditions or without, Mayor?
Well, the staff recommendation was for conditions, so, yeah, I'm okay with the staff recommendation.
How does it agendize?
It is agendized for recommendation for approval with these applications or with these stipulations.
I will just amend the language just a little bit to state that it's for conditions and direct staff to include the minutes from this study session to the state liquor board as documentation of the council's discussion.
Okay.
So, does that qualify to stand on consent?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor, if I may.
Please.
If it goes up with conditions, there's a giant chance that the state's just going to deny it because they don't accept approval with conditions. And this is my lawyer, Chad Caffer, he is here actually now if you have any questions about the county attorney's office.
Okay, Chad, tell me why you can serve liquor at an establishment that has a permanent injunction that says you can't have liquor inside the establishment?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the permanent injunction is actually against particular parties. The injunction was issued by its own language against the owners of the building, one of the sons who was actually running the management of the building, but it's not an injunction against the building itself, and it's not an injunction against the tenant. The way that the actual injunction was written was against four particular parties, that's Nile Theater LLC, I believe it's CK Properties LLC, Corey Adams, Claude Adams, and I'm sorry, I forget, Kathleen Adams, as well as their employees, their agents, or anyone acting in concert with them. The applicant Mantooth is not their employee, Mantooth is not their agent, and Mantooth is not acting in concert with them. Rather, Mantooth Group and Michelle Donovan has an arms-length lease with the owner of the building, which means that the injunction by its own terms don't apply to them. Additionally, under the statute, the statute provides that the type of injunction that was issued, which is an injunction for criminal abatement, is issued against individuals and not against the property. By law, it actually cannot be issued against the property or against an ownership interest in the property, meaning that it's not something that follows the property, which makes a lot of sense, because it's possible that an owner could hide the injunction from a potential tenant or a potential purchaser of the property who is then saddled with, what Mantooth now finds itself saddled with, an injunction against itself for something that's essentially a prior wrong of a prior owner or of a prior lessor.
Well, I don't want to prejudice your application with the liquor board. I think we all, you've operated it for several years successfully, and you've committed to us that you're going to be good neighbors, you're going to follow that policy, so my concerns are satisfied relative to this application. So, I'm comfortable speaking for myself, moving forward, leaving it on the consent agenda as it is agendized.
Yep. What is your understanding of it?
Agendized. That's a good question, because I thought it needed to be changed to say conditional recommendation for approval. The way that it's agendized, as I'm reading it right now, is recommendation for approval.
Okay, and that's why, just to be clear, so there will not be any part of this below that second part that talks about recommendation so long as that part were not carrying forward?
Please, Mr. Richmond.
My feeling is that the three requests of the staff has been satisfied by the, what's been handed to us from legal counsel and the various centering parties. You know, so, for me, one of those three boxes is checked, so we can recommend approval.
Okay. Just to be clear, so we, so when it's read into the record, we just read in as, what you're saying, this has been satisfied?
Our end has been satisfied.
So, now we can just keep it on for approval as we would any other application?
Yeah, and they're going to have to make their case probably at some point about the injunction, they'll have to, you know, you've done the legal research, you'll have to probably present that at some point to someone, but, you know, I don't want to be the arbiter of that.
In fact, just to be clear.
We have, you know what's really cool, is we have these guys, they drive around black and white cars, and they have guns, and they enforce the law, so if somebody breaks the law, we can enforce the law. Works out really well.
Yeah, apparently it didn't work out so well several years ago.
Okay, so, the way I understand it, we are trusting you based on your past experience with the city of running a good establishment.
Thank you.
And I'm sure you intend on continuing to do that, and we appreciate you following the good neighbor policy, but it is helpful for everyone to know that there is currently an injunction out there, and if you become a bad operator, the city will be quick to point out that there's questions as to whether or not that injunction applies. So, yeah, I'm comfortable deleting the language and just having it be recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Is that okay with everybody here?
Mayor, so that on item, just a reminder, Item 3E, we're going to ask for continuance till the first meeting in June.
Thank you. This is the liquor license application, and we haven't been able to track down the applicant to complete the application. All right, so that'll be continued, so again, we're not prejudicing their application. All right, moving on. Any questions regarding Agenda Items 4? Several different contracts. Again, we went over this on Thursday, there were no questions in. Agenda Item 5, taking actions on resolutions.
We're going to run out of time on this.
And Agenda Item 6, additional resolutions.
Let's put the second one.
Agenda Item 7, introducing ordinances. And 8, receiving public comment on ordinances. And 9, development agreements and some zoning ordinances. And then 10, recommendations on a subdivision plan. Okay, council, everything good to go? Everything can remain on consent? All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 2A, the here presentation.
Mayor, I'm going to suggest, because of the time, we, 2A, we can probably defer, but if we, we really kind of need to give you a presentation on 2B, because it does have budgetary impacts.
Okay.
We can skip to that one, we'll just, we'll bring 2A back at another time.
Okay, so we'll continue 2A and 2B, here a presentation and discuss the collection and administration of transaction privilege tax.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Ed Cletus, Business Services Department Director. So, transaction privilege tax, we're just going to touch a bit on the difference between transaction privilege tax and sales tax. Some people, in their minds, it's synonymous, but it's really not. In Arizona, there's actually a tax on the privilege of doing business in Arizona. So, it's not a sales tax on the consumer. So it's not a sales tax on the consumer as it is in many other states, but it is very similar. TPT is on goods, some services, particularly rentals of real property and personal property, as well as construction. Vendors usually pass TPT on, again, to the consumer, again, like sales tax, and the local Mesa sales tax, or TPT in 1314 was about $140 million. Tax simplification is initiative that began under Governor Brewer. There have been four major pieces of legislation that have led us to where we are today. The first one started in 2012, which was a requirement for an online portal, which was going to be one place where a business could go to get a license, to submit their returns, and to make their payments. Shortly thereafter, the governor formed a task force to look at tax simplification. That resulted in House Bill 2111, which was signed by the governor in 2013, and that bill centralized TPT administration with the Arizona Department of Revenue. In 2014, we had House Bill 2389, which did some cleanup, but because ADOR thought that their tax systems could handle the centralization, that bill eliminated the portal requirement. And earlier this year, Senate Bill 1446 was a significant clarification for contractors on how tax applied to them. The language in 2111 really confused that vendor community, and so we worked with the industry, the league, the state, to work on this bill, and as far as we know right now, everybody's much happier. So centralized TPT administration, there's several parts to that that affect Mesa. The first one is tax audit. Tax audit actually went live on January 1 of this year. We now audit under the ADOR processes. Multi-jurisdictional businesses are now required, when they come up for audit, we audit all the jurisdictions that they do business in. In the past, it was the vendor had a choice. They could either have the one agency, one locale audit, or they could have multi-jurisdictional, and what we found is most of them asked for the one audit, one jurisdiction. Multi-jurisdictionals are assigned through ADOR. They can be done by the ADOR, or they can be done by the city. That's the Department of Revenue's decision. For local businesses, as we move forward, we will notify ADOR of our intent to audit, and there'll be a coordination effort to make sure that ADOR does not have an audit underway or planned, but those will be done by a Mesa tax auditor. Our assessments, regardless of the type of audit, our assessments and our disputes will now be handled through ADOR. Another aspect of how this impacts us is our licensing. So our licensing will be centralized. That was planned to go live in November of 2014 for the 2015 calendar year. However, the systems and the processes with ADOR were not ready, so the governor did defer that. We will still have local TPT licenses, however, they will be administered through ADOR. The renewals, if we stay on track, renewals will start in November, and any new licenses for 2016 will be issued through ADOR. Another aspect of our changes is the centralized tax return. Again, that was scheduled to go live in January of 2015, however, ADOR wasn't ready, so again, the governor deferred that. So we currently are targeting February 1 of 2016, which will be taxable transactions that occur on or after January 1 of 16. All the tax returns and payments will be remitted to ADOR and processed by ADOR. Payments will come to the city on a weekly basis. So we do have some concerns. Again, the full program was to go live on January 1 of 15. ADOR's computer systems weren't ready. They did find that our requirements, particularly on local reporting, were more significant in their impact to the ADOR systems than they originally anticipated. So we did work with the governor's office, and we did go live with audit, but we delayed the rest of the implementation till January 1 of 16. The project, as of this time last week, was coded red as a significant risk to being completed, or not being completed on time. I have been told this afternoon that we have now gone to yellow, so we are seeing some catch-up on the timeline and the work that's required. They have a project manager that's working very hard, along with all the city staff and the rest of the DOR staff, to get that project back on time, but we want to context that there is a considerable risk still that we won't make the January of 2016 timeline, but we are making every effort to do so. There are some impacts that came from the state budget this year to the city of Mesa. We have an assessment of $333,000 and change for modifications to the tax system. That is a one-time charge, and the budget included a $953,000 impact for state administration of not just TPT, local TPT, but of urban revenue, HERF, and state shared TPT. That will be an ongoing cost to the city.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Just a question, since they haven't brought their programs up online, do we get a rebate if they're not fully functioning? Because we're kind of being charged for a fully functioning system.
We will, we are watching that very closely. We've had that same conversation, and if ADOR is not ready, we will be making a case to the Director of the Department of Revenue that, you know, we are seeing impact. It's not just that the cost is there, but the system isn't there. It's that we're going to incur additional costs, keep our operations running while the system continues to be developed and revised.
Mr. Luna.
Ed, is the technology just antiquated that they can't keep up with it, or what's the problem here?
The Brit system, the tax systems, the cumulative tax systems at ADOR are significantly behind the times. They are old systems. They are what we would call fragile, and they don't, they are not easy. The technology is so old that it's not easy to reprogram. And I will give, you know, part of it is on our requirements, state does not care which Circle K pays tax. They don't care if it's in Avondale or Mesa. They're going to get their money. It's within the state. However, we, for the different uses of that information that we have, we need to know that it's this one in South Mesa, this one in North Mesa, you know, the 29 of them or the 80 of them, you know, which ones they are. So they have found that to be a pretty significant set of changes to be made in their system. But it is an old system. DOR does have some technology challenges, both in their management as well as, you know, the actual systems themselves, but they have made some commitments to try and address those issues. So, in response to simplification, we've made some changes in how we're approaching our department. We are rebuilding our tax audit program under the ADOR processes. We will be doing, we will continue to do local audits. We will be assigned, we expect to be assigned, multi-jurisdictional audits, which by their nature can be quite complicated because we're going out to all the taxing communities within the state to see what taxable activities are there, and we will be rebuilding our return rate. So we are currently at 1.8x return for the expenses with this group. At one time, we were up around 4x recovery. So we will be rebuilding that as we get into the processes. ADOR did ask us to wind down the audits that we had ongoing as we prepared for the transition, and we are winding those back up now as we can. We're also building, our focus is changing to building a business analysis and intelligence program. Obviously, we are trying to prevent any tax leakage as we move from local administration to state administration. We're trying to enhance our analysis of Mesa tax data, so we want to do a better job of looking at year-over-year tax from businesses. And we're also trying to find businesses in the city that are not currently licensed and submitting tax to us.
Is that, is Build a Business Analysis Intelligence Program a clever way of saying a business license, finally?
No, this bullet is actually talking to taking our existing data, moving it out of our current tax system, which is antiquated itself, but also doesn't allow us to use that data to analyze, you know, year-over-year transactions, who's in our community and how much they're remitting, as well as being able to use that data to go compare it to other databases to see who's in our community we don't have license. I'll get to the business registry in about the next slide. In this process, we're going to go ahead and eliminate three tax auditor positions. Again, if our recovery rate goes up, we can come back and make additional requests at that time showing that it would be an investment. Our tax collections unit, ADOR, will start collecting tax debts after January 1. So the collections group has been transitioning to citywide collections, so we're going to continue to pursue existing TPT debt, but we're also taking on debts from other departments, PD false alarms, fire, housing, property damage, HR, code compliance, and Falcon Field. We're currently at 3.4x the revenue return versus expenses with this group, so we think they're a pretty good investment. And because we're getting out of tax, or the focus on just tax, we're re-titling this group to collections, or citywide collections. The licensing office, DOR, again, is taking over licensing in 2016. We still will be handling all these specialty licenses, liquor licenses, massage, all the others that you see. The business registry, there's always some confusion about what a business registry is at this point, and what we're looking at is, this is a place where we're collecting data of various types to try and find out who's transacting business in our community. So we have all those specialty licenses today, and if we combine those with the alarms permitting as well as the fire safety occupational permits, without adding any burden on the business community of a separate license, we want to see what that accumulation of businesses is in the community. From there, then we can figure out how many people or how many businesses we think are falling outside of that, and we can make a recommendation on how to bring those folks into the business registry as well. Right now, if we were able to get all the fire safety occupational permit folks registered, we think we're going to take care of pretty much everybody except home-based businesses. So without adding any extra burden of the separate business license, we may be able to accomplish that goal. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, most businesses, most communities I've ever done business in require business license. In fact, I think it creates less confusion than more to have a business license instead of not having a business license. And I'm just, maybe we should kick this to a council committee to kind of work through. I have the chamber emailing me now, when are we going to do a business registry? We need to do a business license. You know, everybody expects one when they come to town. You know, it's, I don't understand why we're so afraid of the topic. I've been here for seven years asking about a business license, and it's, every year it's this circular discussion that's getting tiresome.
Well, Mayor and Council, and so we get a consensus of the council to do a business license, then that will help. We also are working on the new, now, we're beginning to be able to collect this with our current system, is this the proposed system?
This will be in the DIME system, the new product.
So the presentation that Christine gave last time we met?
December.
Includes a feature which allows us to create a single portal for businesses that are either getting their alarms permit, their fire safety permit, and what we're hoping then is that that will help us mine the data, and then we could then create the business registry, and then council can decide whether or not that, you know, it essentially, we're collecting information already today. We have information from almost every business today, and so the question then becomes, once we've collected it, we're trying to make it simple. We're trying to make it simple, so when you come in, effectively, you put your information about your business, and then it tells you, oh, do you want an alarm permit? Or then you are required to get a fire permit and any other specialty permit. So we're trying to create it so instead of having to go back and forth, because right now, we have customers that are having to go back, have in the past, I don't know if they're still doing it, going back and forth with the police department and tax and license to get permits. So we're trying to create the DIME system that we made the presentation on the electronic plan review. What we'd have, as I understand it, is a single portal for a business to start out with just a general application, general information, and then from there, it'll tell them, okay, now you're registered as a business, so every business has to do it. Then it could tell them, do you need an alarm permit? Do you need a fire permit? You know, all the other specialty licenses that may be out there. So I think that's exactly where we're headed. Does that make sense?
So the great part of this, in the past discussions that I remembered, the discussion was, hey, we need to do a business license, but it's going to be a multimillion-dollar process of software, and we're going to go ahead and charge the businesses so we can track what the businesses are doing, and that's what I thought was kind of a difficult decision. But now, if we've already developed the software, we have everything in place.
Right, no, well, the way to, thank you, Councilman Finner, and so it's more as we went out shopping for the permitting development services software, and along with it came, we were able to find out that the same vendor, we can use the same software, or, I don't know the right...
Module.
Module, thank you, that allows us to do all this collection of business information also. So it became a, you know, two-for-one, if you would, and you're right, we were originally, and thank goodness we didn't go out and buy the original software and deferred that, because if we had and spent all the time, I think it was over $2 million.
2.4.
And then the state would have come and just taken it out from underneath us, because now they're requiring us to go through their not-so-new system. But this will actually allow us to collect the business information, and it makes sense, right? So whether you're going through and holding a building permit, or you're just a business in Mesa, you will want to be registered here, so it'll tell you then, do you need alarm permit, fire permit, massage permit, whatever it might be, and it'll help work your way through there. Our goal is to have it so it's easy for the businesses to go into one portal and then let the screens kind of walk you through what you need, instead of having to go back and forth to different departments. That's our goal. And then with that, we'll be able to do different types of information for economic development purposes about the kind of businesses that are in here. If council at that point, when we set that up, determines that maybe there's a nominal fee at the front, because there'll be operating and maintenance licenses on the backend, but it wouldn't be anything like we were talking about before, recover 2.4 million, it'll be just more the ongoing licensing of the software.
Perfect. Yeah, go ahead. I think you caught the vision of what we've talked about. I mean, I really appreciate you bringing that up, Councilman Finner, because we always talked about the TurboTax model, you know, the thing that kind of prompts you along as you open it, and that helps us gather the information, know who's here, helps us build our economic development base with the information, but also provides them what they need. So thank you, I really appreciate that explanation.
So would we benefit from having a committee look at the question of, are there any unresolved questions here?
Mayor, if you, I think what we'd like to do is maybe at the appropriate time, as we're, remember, we just, council just purchased the software a few months ago.
December.
But we'd like, maybe we could bring forward as that module's ready to roll out and bring it to a subcommittee, kind of show you how to walk it through and make sure it looks like it's user-friendly. So if you'll, I think we'd like to do that, so if we could prepare to do that, okay.
I see we're running long, so I'll try and move real quickly. In licensing, we're going to take advantage of the changes to eliminate one tax and licensing specialist position. That's because that position processes tax returns and licenses today, so that burden has been relieved. In our payment processing area, again, related to TPT returns, we're not going to be processing those anymore, so we are looking to eliminate two payment processing specialist positions. Mail services, less tax returns going out and coming back, so we have a halftime, as well as other reduced mailing initiatives, so we have a halftime mail services worker position that we're going to eliminate. And then we've made some other changes in other places in our department. So to meet the city manager's request for our ongoing savings, we're looking at seven positions and some additional funding for ongoing savings of $532,000 and change. For 2016, assuming that ADOR stays on schedule, we are asking for some one-time funding, $109,000 to continue those operations related to TPT processing, but again, the ongoing savings that we're putting forward are over $500,000. And with that, do you have any further questions?
Quick question, if this continues to be a, if it fluctuates back from a yellow light to a red light, and ADR is not capable of taking this task on when they should, at that point, we don't want to have eliminated tax processors, right? We want to continue the capability to do it ourselves.
That's correct. That's correct. We'll be back with the city manager to form some kind of a contingency plan for that.
And Mayor and council, Mayor, you'll be, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns continues to monitor this very closely from, from a DOR, working with the governor's administration standpoint. You'll actually be receiving at the next league executive committee meeting coming up on May 15, an update. Well, there should be pretty lengthy discussion about next steps that cities will take in regards to this, but the good news is, I think the current administration has been very willing to work with us. They don't want to see any major issues happen on their watch, and so kudos to Governor Ducey's staff for wanting to work with the league and make sure that the implementation of this goes smoothly.
I just have a quick question. Can we do all of this and increase enforcement and still cut a position? Because this seems like a lot to leave on just the regular staff.
It is a lot, but it's our best estimation that yes, we can do it. We can take it on.
Okay, I would just appreciate if there could be a follow-up, if there is any more needs or if there are increased staffing needs because of this.
Absolutely.
And remember, council, we'll be able to monitor this. These are effective July 1. You know, this is a budget for July 1, so we saw some time, and I think we'll, obviously we'll have to monitor this. If we see that, you know, our goal here is to comply with the state law, but also be effective in our collections. If we determine we need more resources and we can, as Ed was mentioning, we look at these kind of ratios, and you know, we're at 1.8, but that's because we were told to step back from audits. If we can get to that two-and-a-half times ratio, that's what we look for. So we, you know, if we're looking that we can be successful that way, we'll bring more staff back, but we're also cognizant of the fact that it's hard to justify carrying the same level of staff when in theory the state's taking on the responsibilities, but we have to be careful to make sure that they are able to do that and performing, because at the end of the day, this staff is what's collecting the lifeblood for the city to keep all our operations running. So we'll monitor that as we go along.
And then there's a lot of unknowns as we move forward, so we're taking our best guess at this point, and we can come back with adjustments.
Okay. Well, I guess we all wish there was more certainty attached to this, so we'll see how the state progresses in taking this task on. Any other questions or concerns, council? Okay, if not, thank you very much. Good presentation. Next item is Item 3, acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards and committees. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item here, reports on meetings or conferences attended. Council? Thank you. I think in the interest of time, we'll move on to scheduling the meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Thursday, Thursday study session.
May 7, 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. We are adjourned, and we'll now convene upstairs for the formal council meeting.